Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee McFetrich here.
Trustee Chombley here.
Trustee Garrett to excuse Mayor Martin.
Here. Motion to approve the minutes of the village board meeting January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any changes, solutions, additions, takeaways, presentas, time divides?
Everything was good today.
Everyone happy?
Yep.
All those in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, general question period for members of the community. As we have none here tonight, we'll move on. Mike, your, uh, let's see, I saw your, yes, your report.
Yeah, I gave you a report of a few of the things I've been doing. Pretty quiet really right now. Grass isn't growing yet. Other than that, just a couple of things I'm working on.
What's, what's the status of the Chestnut Street apartment? Would you want, well, no heat, Chestnut Street?
It's been an ongoing thing for a year and a half and, I mean...
Do we get COVID?
Yeah, well, he calls me at my house on Sunday, he said go shovel his sidewalk and all this nonsense, so... I mean...
Is he really going without heat?
He, he doesn't wanna put any fuel in his tank? I mean, the, the property owner went and put ten gallons in, got it going, had Jimmy Minard go there to make sure it was working. Now he's crying that there's no heat again, well, he doesn't wanna put fuel in his tank.
Mike said he's gone and there's new tenants.
Well, he supposedly was evicted or moved out or something, so...
Wow, okay.
So hopefully that, that problem is gone.
So that may be resolved.
Yeah.
You there, that one time with the state police?
Uh, I mean, the, the cops didn't even wanna deal with this guy anymore.
Called us one to provide protection.
Yeah.
I have a question for him.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And actually, it's a question for you as well, as I highlighted this. So we met with the zoning board for action on interpretation for apartment being located on first floor with access to Cedar Street. So was this building actually on Main Street?
Yeah, it's on the corner of Main and Cedar.
Now I understand.
Yeah.
I wanted to clarify, 'cause I...
Oh, okay.
'Cause I felt, well, Cedar Street's not included. But if it's on the corner, then that makes sense. Okay.
That house on Little Street's got heat in it now, huh?
Um, well, the, the modular?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was, actually, I was there the other day, he was down.
Was he?
So he, they're getting ready to do the finishing on the inside, the taping and the painting, and he expects to move in by spring. So, coming along pretty good, actually.
Seems like there's a lot of problems. You always, when you tow half a building or whatever, you get that far, there's always gotta be some movement on the...
Yeah, there, there were some cracks and a couple of issues with some of the windows. You know, the, the seal broke on them, which is typical, that type of setup. But he's gonna build a garage on there too. They were gonna do it this past fall, but because of the, the weight with NICEG for the power, then winter came and winter hasn't left, so they decided to put it up.
Is there enough room there for a garage?
Uh-huh.
Is there enough room there for a garage?
Yeah, in the front, yeah.
Okay. It's been a long haul. Hey, anything else for Mike?
Thanks, Mike.
Good evening and welcome to your February village board meeting. The weather has not been very cooperative over the past few weeks, with temps rising and rapidly falling, causing icy roads, water main breakages, and the beginning of the frozen pipe season that will keep our DPW crew busy until spring finally arrives. We will get through this as we have for many, many years. Words from the eternal optimist. I would like to thank trustee McFetrich for hosting an informational meeting last Saturday evening at the Champlain Meeting House. Mr. Ray Johnson, environmental specialist, was the featured speaker, and had some important insight regarding climate change and how it affects many, many aspects of our lives today and the foreboding influences climate change will have on our future. I was at work for voting, that was a good one.
That's very well said.
I had to look at Elmo's. It was a very important, very interesting meeting on a very important subject. I'd like to bring the board up to date on a few areas of concern. The contamination reduction project continues with work in the cellar of the village office that will hopefully reduce the irritating odor situation that necessitated the early closing of the office for a couple of days last week. There is much more work to be done on the parking lot and the outside of the building to construct a vacuum system that will vent the offending odors away from the building. Needless to say, this is a very contaminated area where the village office sits and require close observation and remediation for a long, long period of time. The replacement blower delivery date for the wastewater treatment plant has been moved up. Actually, it's, moving up is a misnomer there, because it was moved down, but I mean, moved up anyway. Moved up to the middle of the March, middle of March, if the manufacturer can get the new blowers ready for shipment. The deadline for final contract completion is the middle of April, and hopefully, this will all be accomplished by that date. The streetlight aggregation project is slowly moving forward. You will see in your paperwork an agreement with a company that will do an audit of streetlights, electricity bills, and other items like the Maple Street lights that are the subject of ownership. I will contact NICEG this week to discuss this matter with them and find out what the final buyout price is in case the village chooses to purchase the arms and lights that are currently on the poles. At a later date, the board will be presented with more information as to the overall cost to replace the existing lights with new LED light lamps. I think it was about, what, twelve, thirteen dollars a pole?
I think so.
I think so.
A couple of meetings were held with the representative of RCAP, Rural Community Assistance Program Solutions. Ms. Palmer was very instrumental in developing an RFP, request for proposal, that will be needed as we seek an engineering firm and funding to replace water mains for causing problems as they are, as they are the location of many of the breakages we have experienced. With the current funding cycle, we may be looking at late two thousand nineteen or early two thousand twenty for funding, unless we find a water, unless we find that the water system is in an emergency situation where we may have to go find other, more costly funding sources. This is not a good scenario, but to quote a famous philosopher, it is what it is. We must also begin seeking engineering services for the mandated secondary treatment system of the wastewater treatment plant. We still have a couple of years to meet to get this implemented, but the sooner we get started, the greater the possibility of state funding for this required addition needed before the treated effluent enters the river. Another RFP will be needed to develop, to be developed to address this matter as well. Engineers unfortunately are a necessary evil. Current water, wastewater bills are past due. Shut-off notices will be sent soon, with service shut-offs to follow. As you know, this is a continual, continual problem. Same accounts, same excuses that we deal with each billing quarter. Enough said. Trying to be more patient. Thank you for the pleasure of your time. Trustee Chombley, since you're all alone over here, I might as well get you talking.
Okay. Well, I'll bring you up to speed on where I'm at with our project, you know, the team that Kim and I are on regards to the water. I was forgetting that Amy wasn't gonna be here, it'd be good to refer, but... I've received the square footage data from the tax assessor. I haven't received the apartment building report yet, which is only gonna narrow things down for me, so I know which buildings I have to get to. But in regards to some of our conversations, what I'm intending to do is to rewrite a, uh, a policy, a code for us to use here in the village in regards to EDU calculations. And a guide. I've got a copy of the town's, and the town doesn't address warehouses at all in theirs. I looked at it, and if you take a warehouse, I'll give you an example. If you take FedEx on Pocket Boulevard, and if you look at water usage, they would end up with a zero point two for an EDU, less than vacant lot. So I'm, I'm stating that we're gonna have to go by square footage, it's something that makes sense. And using square footage, it looks like they end up between the half.
And so the FedEx is on West Service Road?
Yes.
Okay, so Pocket Park, that one's in the village, I think.
Lawrence Pocket Boulevard is what I meant to say, I'm not sure if I misstated, yeah.
It's on the corner, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and I also looked at, another one I just pulled up real quick was NADA on Butter Nut Street. They don't use water.
It's vacant, isn't it?
No, they, they still use it, trucks still go in and out of there.
Okay.
Roughly once every week or two.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still using it, but they don't, they don't have water, 'cause on according to the water report that I got from, from Mary, it's blank, so they're not using any. So in, in regards to that one, it would be, uh, zero if we use water, and it's a point five by square footage. So, that's the Town of Payson, that I'm using their EDU conversion for their industrial warehousing. Which in terms of funding all this, which is a one EDU per twenty thousand square feet. It's gotta be at least that, otherwise your, your commercial properties are gonna have less EDUs than a one family resident.
That's, that's not right.
No.
I'm surprised the other municipality doesn't have something on, on warehousing.
The town, you mean?
Yes, the other municipality.
Yeah. I agree, 'cause they have a couple of warehouses, I'm not sure how they did them.
Everything on the West Service Road's in the town.
The, the other thing I looked at in regards to Town of Payson for food preparation and food sales uses the projected peak monthly gallon usage divided by seventy-five hundred as a factor. And looking at Price Shopper, using that. Where I have them. I think they came up with a, a five, if I remember right, and I have that written down there. I'm gonna start it on the other sheet.
Creates, like you create six somewhere.
Is that a true estimate in the six somewhere? Yeah, it looks like by square footage, you end up with a five, and, uh, by water usage, I think they end up with a four. So, four point three is at it. So I think that it works. I think it works. So I think that's what we need to do going forward. So where I'm at now is, I got thirty more pages of data entry off the tax rolls.
Well, you wanna talk about a fun Sunday afternoon?
Well, I know, I went through them twice.
It goes twice as fast if Kim, Kim was available for like an hour and a half one day to help me, and she can type faster to begin with, plus I can just read it off to her, as compared to me looking at it, typing it in. I'm a lot slower.
I just had a pencil. So when I do, I have a pencil. When you help me, we have two pencils.
Once I get the rest of that data entered, and what I'm doing is I'm, everything, all the buildings that I can't assign an EDU count logically to, I'm putting in red, and I'll go back through and we'll sift them out, and I'll probably have to knock on doors departments to do those correctly. Well, if, if you can't guess, I mean, we've talked about that, you don't, you don't wanna assign them more than what's necessary.
How are you doing apartments?
Apartments, well, the same way the town supposedly does. It's a one bedroom is a quarter EDU, a two bedroom is a...
Each apartment is one EDU?
Not according to your code.
Well, they, they never followed that code when they did it.
That's what we figured.
Wow.
So you're doing one apartment, one EDU? That's what Reagan I did when we went...
I thought, I thought two bedrooms was...
Two would be three quarters, then three would be one.
One bedroom's a half, the two is three quarters, and three is one, you're right.
Yeah.
That's the town's code.
But they're not following that?
That was a, a local law that they passed that Matt Cooper had, had given them at the time as a guide. And somehow or other, it ended up being a local law. How do you write a local law where you're gonna specify one entity, X amount of EDUs? I mean, that fluctuates. So why would you write a local law specifying that?
Well, it's supposed to be just a guide to calculate...
I know, but if you read that code, you're gonna see that the boarder has assigned sixty EDUs. That's a local law in the town now. I mean, I don't know why they did that.
I don't know, I don't have that whole...
I think that's increased, hasn't it?
Pardon me?
I think that has increased, hasn't it?
Yeah.
So if it's, if it's a local law, how do you increase it?
Well, that's my question.
Yeah, what I intend to write is to say, policy.
That's something that's been lacking since day one, a, a policy and how all these EDUs are calculated and, on a formula.
Well, this one we got off the DEC website.
Yeah.
And it's actually an example from the Town of Payson, so it's not like they even have their own...
I mean, there's two ways you can do that. You can either do an ad valorem, where you go by what a property's assessed for in taxes and assign your debt reduction according to that, or by EDUs. Ad valorem is a little bit more complicated, 'cause the assessor has to get involved. But in retrospect, I kinda think it would've been a lot easier to go that way than trying to, to assign EDUs to each and every different use.
Well...
It would've been better in their relationship.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Okay.
So anyways, that's where I'm at, so trying to put together something that's very accurate.
You're gonna have gray hair when you're done.
I've got it already.
No, no, no.
You ain't seen nothing yet.
No.
That's all I have.
Jim?
Well, I'll add to, to your thanks to Ray Johnson for his presentation on Saturday night, that was excellent. And, uh, no, no, that's fine. And also to Mark Berry for the author talk that he did a couple of weeks ago. Again, great turnout at DEC. Some upcoming things, uh, the sewing classes continuing on Wednesday, the thirteenth, and on the twenty-seventh at six thirty. It's been a lot of fun to watch these, these women learn how to sew. We have some kids' activities scheduled for next week, the vacation week. If you check the Facebook page, the Champlain Kids Connected, that's the best way to know what's going on, because I don't have it all memorized. The Champlain Book Club is meeting on the twenty-eighth at six thirty. And to save the dates, uh, we're going to again have International Slow Art Day, April sixth. And that'll be in the afternoon. It's still pretty amazing that Little Champlain participates in this international day. We're on the, we're on the schedule, we're on the calendar from around the world. I'm working with Cat O'Brien to get the artists.
Excuse me.
And also, we'll plan on April twenty-seventh for our Arbor Day celebration again. That's the day after Arbor Day. I know last year, we think had it a week late. So let's tentatively say April twenty-seventh. And, uh, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
Okay, um... In going around with Janet and Nikki one couple of days for getting signatures, and I went out on Saturday to finish, people are very complimentary of the village. Much kudos to the crew, the office, um, us, um, for the job that everyone is doing. They sing Mike's praises to high heaven. And we, we all know how lucky we are to have him and, and the girls for the great job that they do. But I wanna thank everyone for opening their doors on those really cold days to let us in for signatures. We really appreciate, um, their support and, um...
It was a cold year.
There really was, I asked, you know, like when I was out on Saturday, do you have any complaints? Do you have any concerns? No? Okay, come, come to a meeting, come sit in on a meeting, you know, and... So, I didn't, uh, I didn't hear any complaints, so it was good. But again, thank you for opening your door, because it was frigid. It was. So, other than that, um, I have not had time to look at the funding things from Sierra. I know I had a, um, an email from her, the Department of, Department of Health, and I just have not had time to look at that, so...
Did you, did you both get the funding on the, on the, on the farmer's market and...
I have not had a chance to look at that one yet.
I, I looked, yeah, I looked that over, I don't, I think we're so small, but it's probably not going to apply to us. But we're planning on having our market again, of course. We've got our two farmers, so, so that's good.
It certainly has been beneficial.
It has.
Okay, yes.
That's it?
Thank you. Juanita?
Everyone has their January expense and revenue reports. Um, I think we're doing very well at this point, no major... ...insolence. Next month, I don't know.
And that will be part of our...
What's that?
I said that will also come back up with a new business, just to do a quick review of what we're looking at here for our budget. All right. Any questions for Juanita on that?
Nope.
Need to pay the warrant?
Um, we have two transfers to do. I suggest, um, we have to do our first payment to Pipeline Mechanical for the blowers. So, um, we had, last month, we transferred money into the engineering account to cover the rest of Barton and La Judas's bill. So I suggest taking the fifteen thousand seven hundred from fund balance. So I would do a transfer from G fourteen, to G fourteen forty point one, engineering, fifteen thousand seven hundred from G five ninety-nine, fund balance. That's one of the transfers, and then the other one, um, is out of the general, 'cause we need to pay for the Patterson's fence. But we use the funding in the building account when we covered the windows up at the...
Old Village Hall.
At the old Village Hall, yeah. So, um, therefore, we'd have to transfer to A eight six 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 point four, building maintenance, a thousand dollars from Parks, A seven one ten point four.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? It just seems kinda irritating. I know we signed a contract, but have to pay before we get the work started, you know, with these blowers, but we'll get it done. Any further comments? Go ahead.
So why are we taking the transfer from the Parks for the fence?
Because there's money in that fund.
Okay.
You had to take money out of there to...
Yeah, taking money out of Parks to put in the building maintenance to pay the rest of fencing.
No, I was just wondering why we were taking it from that particular...
Oh, and we, it, whatever account usually has extra money, we transfer into the, an account that's...
Okay.
They need.
No, I just didn't, I didn't know if there was like a...
No, no, there's no reason in it why it's...
Okay.
All right. If there's nothing else, a roll call please.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFetrich.
Aye.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Motion to approve the warrant?
We have additional invoices of four thousand one hundred and seventy-one forty-one to be added for the, for a total warrant of forty-two thousand nine seventy-nine twenty-three.
Must've been a lot of bills in the mail today.
Let's see, additional invoices again?
Four thousand one hundred and seventy-one forty-one.
Thank you.
Got this? Any questions on the warrant? Oops, can't talk about it. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, we can talk about it.
I had just a couple of things highlighted. Big Apple Audio?
Okay. What happened there is like, from two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Anyway, he sent me these invoices and said, I can't show where I've received payment. So I had to go dig all the invoices out. And out of all the invoices he sent me, there was only, there was a hundred and eighty-five dollars that, on one of the invoices, that was not paid.
Okay. Salt blocks?
Um, the sander.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Okay.
It's left from that, you mean?
Yeah, that, that wasn't paid, so I, I told him we'd get a check out to him. It's like from two thousand sixteen. So what happened was, at, in May, we paid an invoice, Mike gave us an invoice that said, I want to get this done, but we're gonna take it out of this year's budget. So when he got it done the next year, I mean, after June, the invoices didn't match.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that...
'Cause I had the same question, I was like...
It is what it is.
Why would it be a salt block for a hundred and eighty-five dollars?
Well, yeah, um...
Either it's a very small salt lock, salt blocks, or...
Uh, voucher two eighty-two, Lenny's Shoe and Apparel?
Um, that's Jimmy's boots, his new boots. Nobody's gotten boots this year.
Well, there's, isn't there two, isn't there one here for Woody?
Yeah, Woody's got one.
Uh, no, I, what I was questioning is because he's, he wasn't, he's not here. Or is he back?
No, he isn't, but he asked if he could go get his new boots, because they, um...
Needed some breaking in.
They needed some breaking in, but she also wanted him to wear them in his therapy.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That, that just hit me last night, but I'm going through this going...
No, he, uh, he, he asked if he could...
Oh, that's fine.
He seems to be doing quite well, moving around and stuff.
He's doing really well.
I'm very glad that, you know, he's, he's out walking every day, and he's, uh, he's working at it very hard, I'm glad he's...
And pipeline, I think that's what we just talked about.
That was it. Thank you.
So my question is, why it's so expensive at the wastewater treatment plant for Constellation and NICEG? It's like over three thousand. That's way more than it's ever been since I have...
Yeah, but you gotta consider, this month is also the winter month, months. So there's usually...
Let's see, you just gave me one.
And didn't, and didn't we make changes to our supplier and stuff?
We did, we're only paying four...
Should speak four cents?
Yeah, we're only paying four cents per kilowatt.
And it's still this hot?
Well, there's a lot of energy being used, uh, lights, heat.
Still lasts?
The demand for the sewer plant was sixty thousand... Sixty, no, forty-one, forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty was a kilowatts for thirty-eight days.
And I would dare say, is, is those, is that one blower, of course, they're only got one, but I mean, is that one blower continues to...
Oh, Janet.
Continues to die.
On that NICEG bill? Three hundred and fifty-three dollars is, um, natural gas.
Oh, it is part of the natural gas, okay.
It's all, it's always on the NICEG though, it's not on the Constellation.
Right, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
It is expensive.
So their commercial comes the same way as residential comes all in one bill? The electric and the natural gas.
But our supplier, our, our energy supplier is Constellation.
Right.
But your demand and your delivery is from NICEG, and natural gas is on the...
Right, yeah, 'cause that's what we have at home.
Yeah.
Okay, so I take...
Thirty-five percent.
So I take that back a little bit, 'cause I just looked at last year's. And it was three thousand five hundred. So we're actually five hundred less. So I take that back. It's just so much compared to the month before.
But just consider last, yeah, last month, NICEG's last month was twenty-nine thousand three sixty with their kilowatt usage, and this month it's forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty, so that's...
Yeah.
Ten thousand more kilowatts.
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, running more.
I know, I, but, you know, I took the figures from last year that you just gave me, and it's...
Yeah.
Okay. I determined that somehow we're gonna cut that thing.
Well, the.
Maybe the blowers will help.
The blowers are gonna help.
Yeah.
No doubt.
I'm gonna be really discouraged if they don't.
They will. They will.
I suggest you.
I think you see a twenty, twenty-five percent reduction once you get those in there.
Okay. I'm gonna come find you and tell you.
Even ten percent would be significant, but I think it is a close reply, that's what they protect.
I mean, given that we're paying forty-five percent more for the water plant, I'd like to see a reduction in the wage drop.
Okay, anything else on the warrant? I don't wanna hurt you, just.
Nope.
Look it over, make sure you're.
Well, those are the only.
Make sure you're happy with this.
Look at that as well.
All right, there's no more discussion, another roll call please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McFetrich.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Let's see the correspondence, please.
Um, fourth quarter sales tax revenue from Clinton County Treasure. Correspondence from John Rowe, forty-five Oak Street. J C O monthly report, Clinton County Soil and Water Municipal Assistance Programs. And Troy and Banks Agreement for Utility Audit.
All right, let's see agreement with Troy and Banks, that they will go along, they'll look at our electric bills, they'll look at our, uh. What we're paying, NISIC and all of this good stuff to see that our, what we're paying is, is correct. We've done this before in the past, had one of these audits, when we had to look at Time Warner Cable.
Yeah.
Uh, you'll see the, you'll see the percentages there under number three. Whatever they can save us, and then this will also be significant, I think, when we, if we find that we can buy these arms and the existing bulbs. And I believe the last buyout price was fifty-six hundred dollars. Uh, with a twenty-nine hundred dollar audit, they're gonna do the audit for free, so we might as well have them do this. And then, uh, this will put us in a better position to, to see how, what direction we wanna go. Whether we wanna buy the arms and the lights, or we wanna just let NISIC change them over. But at least we'll have a better sense of the cost at that time.
Agreed.
Um. All right, uh. I don't know that. You've been copied to this, I, I received an email from John Canosa, uh, the Clinton County Health Department. And in essence, what it's saying is, will the village be, will the village be available? At times when the electricity is out for a long period of time? Will the village resources be available for people who need oxygen machines? Uh, this is called emergency planning for public in your communities that require oxygen concentrator. Electrical charging during extended power outages. It's just for people that can come here and use our electricity because we'll have the generators running anyway. You know, that need the oxygen machines. Keep them, um, you know, to keep them supplied. I said I didn't think that there would be any issue, but I would bring it to the board's attention. Uh, if everyone is okay with it, I'll send them an email tomorrow saying that the Village of Champlain is, uh, is okay with this.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
They're just trying to make a, a list of all the municipalities, you know, for people that.
Just in their space.
And that's this one as well. That's all, that's John Canosa. Couple months ago, maybe four weeks, five weeks now. We had a wastewater treatment plant inspected, uh, there were a number of things that needed remediation. Uh, those have all been dressed, addressed, and, uh. I have sent that response to D E C. The one lacking area that, uh. Was brought up and, and. Had some conversations with a Mr. Streeter, who is the Regional Water Manager, D E C. About a. Assistant, Certified Assistant Operator for the Wastewater Treatment Plant. We have a certified operator, we must also, according to the New York State D E C rules. We must also have a assistant who is available twenty-four seven. And available when the certified operator, plant operator is on a vacation or a weekend off, or whatever the case may be. Now. We've always been, over the last. Number of years. This has always been kinda. We'll take care of it, all right, take care of it when you can and, and get it done, and, you know, so it really hasn't been addressed. Well, this gentleman is new and the inspector was new and, uh, we must now. Find ourselves in line with this mandate. I know we had this discussion back when we hired our new employee. A couple months ago. Um. And that is, uh. We were given the information that the current operator had about two years left before retirement, if you remember that conversation? Well. Recently. I had the same conversation, except now it has been extended to four years. Now that has some influence on our hiring behavior with the new employee a few months ago. So what we looked at and what, uh. What we, the solution to this issue. Is we already have an employee who has a significant number of hours banked. For experience at the wastewater treatment plant. It was the intention of him getting the number of hours and then going to the, going to the school, well, it's, you know, when you're. When you're a person down, you don't have a whole lot of time to do some of these things, but. So the remedy to this situation, and I haven't got a response to my letter of Friday. The, from Mr. Streeter as of, as of today, but I'm sure. I asked the other employee who has been working at this on and off. If he was interested in, in going along with this, and his only concern was he didn't wanna be pulled off the streets. He wanted to stay on the streets. Well, what we have worked out is, and we'll have to iron out some of the seams here at a, at a future meeting. What we have ironed out with him is that he will take the home study course. We will have to, obviously have to foot the bill for the, for the books and whatever else is needed to. Be successful at this home study course. And he will continue to spend some time, when the time exists. At the wastewater treatment plant. The issue with this is everything that he does has to be documented, and I don't know that they've been doing this documentation. But everything that he does in that plant has to be documented, and there's at least a six-month exposure here. Now, six months is about a thousand hours. Uh, I got the impression. That if, if. He can justify his hours. I mean, fifty percent of the time he's there, it has to be hands-on stuff. The other fifty percent is paperwork and testing and managing and all of this other stuff. That, to me, is not the one that's gonna be the issue. It's gonna be the first fifty percent where he has to show. He was actively working at the wastewater plant. Running a machine or doing something to, to keep the plant operational. I think that can be, I think that can be done, I don't, I, I got the impression, Janet was in on the phone call. I got the impression that Mr. Streeter was. Get as much as you can done, get it documented, and then move forward. I think he's gonna give us some leeway here. The only, I mean, there's gonna be some cost, you know, cost involved with getting the home study materials. But there's also, because we have an activated sludge plant, he has to go to an activated sludge course. That means we're gonna have to send him somewheres for about five days, probably, uh, Morrisonville, not Morrisonville, what is that?
Morrisville.
Morrisville, thank you. To get that, get that part of the certification done. It's a whole lot easier than, I mean, we are a two-way plant, if we're gonna send him for a two-way certification. You gotta go through the, you gotta go through the laboratory stuff, you gotta go through all the other things. This will give him and will give us. The certified person that we need to keep that plant running. Uh. We've been, and I'll take the blame, we've been negligent in that area, uh, we've known. With past inspections that we should have had, uh, uh, an assistant certified, certified is the key operator there. Uh, and I certainly wasn't gonna share some of the information about who was watching that plant when it was done. Cause I would, you know, we would've got hung out to dry there in a hurry, but anyway, I, that's on tape too. So that's how we're gonna, I, 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 that's how I would recommend that we handle this. That we get the person, and I think it's only fair that, you know, you discuss how you wanna deal with this. That he does the home study, if he's got a couple hours here, I mean, I think he can do it on CD-ROM with the classes, I looked at the curriculum, it's gonna be tough.
I'm sure it is.
It is going to be tough, because you don't only have to do this plant, this type of plant. But you gotta do a larger one, and a larger one, and a larger one, and all kinds of different things, and you gotta be proficient in each one of those. So, you know, the way I think I would, I would do this is. Get him started on the home study course, if he's got a couple hours, or Mike can spare him for two or three hours here, put the CD in, and do it here. I mean, he's gotta get it done. I asked.
I think that'd be the best way to accomplish it, be at, at that time here.
I asked Mr. Streeter. I, I, I anticipate that the certification process will be completed successfully before the end of two thousand nineteen. Now, that may be taking a bit more for granted, I don't know when the schools are available. But at least if we do the home study and he starts, he starts putting his hours in what he's doing.
Documenting it.
Documenting all this information, at least that will show that we are working towards this anticipated goal. That's, you know, I, I think that that's how I would approach this. I think it works, he seemed to give us a little, he seemed. Okay with it, give us a little leeway, he mentioned two or three times that you are not the only ones that are having trouble finding certified operators. A lot of small plants here in the North Country and New York State are in the same boat.
I'm sure.
So they're gonna, I think they'll work with us, as long as we show them that we are making some.
Effort.
Effort to move forward. So, that's that. Okay, we had the blower update, we've got the contamination update, uh. Not to, not to get us out on Mike here, but let me see what he's got. Okay, this is, uh, this is his report for tonight's meeting, if you wanna share it with the board, I hope you don't mind, go home and rest. Yes, thank you, uh. And as he says, recoup before the storm, I'm sure I will be there many hours over the next couple of days. Okay. Wow. Let's just put this in record, say, you know, there's five pages here.
When did you do that?
Yeah, when did you do that?
Uh, must've been this afternoon or tonight.
You sure we have copies?
Cause we left at four.
Oh, this is copies.
I don't know if he's that sick, do I really wanna touch it?
I was thinking, a five-page report from Mike Ross.
I'm gonna say, when did he have time to do it?
Yeah.
Let's even see it.
I got two here, somebody put.
Yeah, we'll, that's what I'll write down.
They have to write it down, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, sorry about that. Glad you all scared, no? All right, um, we'll just read this into the record real quick, Mary, you got a copy, so you can?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. This month we mostly worked on snow and ice removal, we had to change the springs in the Peterbilt plow truck because they had broken. We were able to borrow a tandem plow truck with no sander, so had to make multiple trips with the one ton to sand the streets. During all the wind, after the last big storm, I stayed out most of the night just to keep the streets open with the pickup. We had, we do have our truck back now, so we're in good shape for the upcoming storm. I had the Village of Lake Placid come down and help me correlate a water leak. And we dug and found that we had a water main break down here on Main Street near the office that we fixed. We may possibly have another break further down the street where we've got numerous breaks. Uh, because there's water running on the heads of the road again, I am going to have to get somebody here again to correlate, help me locate. If there is another break, what we found with this one, they were, they were within, Lake Placid come over with all their fancy locating tools. It was a shared service, uh. The guy from Rural Water sent them up here because he had to go someplace else, they were within three feet of the break.
Wow.
So, didn't have to, you know, dig a lot. Here's the, I think the one that you could put a little star after. I've already broken into the sand pile twice and mixed to fill the shed up, but we're almost out of salt and sand mix again. I am going to have to mix the salt I have left with sand after the storm because our shed will be empty. We already have our salt quota for the year, and we'll have to find more salt somewhere to make it through the rest of the winter. We need to up our salt order for next year so we don't run into the same situation that we had this winter with this much snow and ice. Okay, now, last year he ordered, I think it was sixty ton, something like that. And we got an extra, we got an extra truckload from Ross's Point, which we had to return. This year he ordered ninety ton.
Did he take only?
I think so.
And we were almost out of salt. There's no other place that we can buy salt. We have used our quota.
He didn't call yet.
Didn't call Ross's Point?
No, 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 he didn't call, um, where we got the salt to see if we could get another truck if we had to pay a higher price.
Well, that's, yeah, he doesn't. Uh, well, he gave me the impression that he didn't have that excess, but. He's gonna get another, he said he wants to get another load from Ross's Point and possibly some from the state, so he can, if he can get some, great. Great. You know, again, we'll up his, we'll have to up the salt quota in the, in discounting budget. You know, you, you order some, let's say he orders, he orders fifty ton. Well, he gets his fifty ton and all he's allowed to order over that is twenty percent more. So. My understanding was, this was all done through the county, and once the county gets the quota, us, we can't get anymore. So I don't know if he can find some and buy some for.
Well, that's what I suggested, it's possible to buy another load, so we're not in this predicament. Cause next year we're gonna have to pay back, I mean, even though he's upping his load, then you're still behind.
You still have to pay it back.
Well, you're still gonna pay it back, but if you up the quota, that takes care, that should help us out there. But anyway. I've had one resident that the water line froze in Main Street twice in two days last week. So I was able to thaw it out with our Magic Kiss Thawing Machine and instructed him to let the water run, keep the line from freezing until spring. I am sure there will be more in the near future with the warm temps and the frost keeps pushing down. We are still working to try and get the thick ice layer off the sidewalks, so please use caution if you use the sidewalks. Just a reminder, we have another storm coming, please don't park on the village streets or sidewalks so that we can keep them clean. I also had an issue with trash cans all over the place last Friday. The cans were put in the road everywhere and had to move them to be able to scrape the ice off the streets with a loader. Please pick up your trash cans, don't leave them out curbside for days. Ongoing issue there.
Well, last Friday had a, an additional issue. The, well, the women, they were delayed. Ours is normally done at quarter to ten in the morning, it got done like at three in the afternoon. So Pacella had some sort of an issue, and that compounded this problem.
I don't have my budget sheets, everybody, you copied everybody with the necessary stuff.
Yes.
Okay. You wanna explain this?
Oh, the budget?
Yes. Let me go get my sheets and go ahead.
Okay, so Janet Gray and I went over the budget, um, I went over all the wages and, um, benefits. We gotta consider we've added a new employee this year, plus we had to pay health insurance, so there's like sixty thousand dollars.
Let me go, go home. Go ahead, huh? You understand what I'm saying? I'm not gonna argue.
Have a good night.
So, just in the general, with the wage increases and the insurance updates and fringe benefits, you're talking about sixty thousand dollars, just in general, fund adding. So, when we went over the budget, if you look at it last year, um, we decided to use fund balance of fifty thousand. So, at this point, we're, we're, we have a hundred, is what it's showing that we're short. But theoretically, it's only fifty because we're fifty short last year. You understand what I? So, anyway, um, it's very bare bones as far as I'm concerned as to, I don't know where else we could cut at this point. Um, like I said, the biggest, the biggest point is adding a new employee, that's.
Well, we also left some money in there. As you look at that for the temporary, you know, for the seasonal employee.
Kinda cut that in half, though.
Yeah, but I think it's wise to put some money in there, because if, if the weather cooperates a little bit and the guys can get out there and do what hasn't been done over the last year and a half or two years with, with paving and sidewalks and stuff like that, you may need somebody that's gonna be on that tractor to do the lawn mowing and trimming and stuff like that.
I agree.
We'll just have to be able to say, you'll start in April, and instead of going through the Sep- September, October, you're done in August, or you're done, whenever the money runs out, you're done. And then they'll have to pick up the slack, but I mean, that takes a lot of time. You know, that could be used getting the streets ready to pave or sidewalks formed or whatever it may be, whatever project uh, the board decides it wants to attack. But I think it would be wise to leave some funding in there, you know, so that you can, you can bring somebody on a temporary basis to get the nasty work done.
And our major funding for general is our property taxes. And our increase that we got in our property values amounted to like twenty-three hundred dollars. So it's not like we have a big increase. And, um, we've had a discussion with NICOM and Betty Little's office regarding the funding that they wanna cut, which the village only gets ninety-six hundred dollars, which is, so, we figured out if they cut that out, what would we have to raise to, how much property taxes would we have to raise to make up that money? We'd have to raise our property taxes seventeen cents per thousand in order to make up that ninety-six hundred dollars. So, our property taxes aren't, you know, we don't have a lot of income by raising the few cents that it's not gonna make a big dent in.
I mean, you could, you could answer the general fund, this, this is not a bad budget.
No. We actually took, I actually took ten, ten thousand dollars off road surfacing repairs, we have a lot of CHIPS funding this year. We usually do a lot of paving one year and then the next year we kinda do small.
Haven't done any paving in the last couple years.
No, so we, I, I think between our CHIPS funding and we have money in reserves and what we have budgeted, we should have plenty. Hopefully, we can get, hopefully we can get some paving done before this budget ends.
So if I understand correctly, with this proposed budget, how much are you taking from fund balance?
Right now, we're at a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, right?
Yep. It's a big, yeah, that, that's why I wanted everybody to get it and you guys discuss what you're.
It's gonna run, but don't we need to raise revenue, cause next year this is gonna be worse, we're gonna end up in the same boat? Other municipalities were in.
I don't think we're gonna have that.
Led the fund balance down to a point that you're in trouble.
No, I don't think we're gonna be in that situation for, for some time. You can look on your sheets and see what the fund balances are. But I think next year, we're taking this hit, obviously our budget will have to include the extra employee next year, but I think, I think your budget can be made, that it's not gonna be this big, this big a hit all at once. And still maintain your, still maintain your tax rate.
At this point, we've only spent half of our general budget.
And the figure is what, about approximately ten percent for the rollover?
Correct.
So there you've got another fifty thousand.
If you roll over that fifty thousand, you're short that fifty thousand, then you wouldn't take any, it would cover that amount that you're supposed to take out of fund balance, so it wouldn't change.
It's just, you won't know for sure until May first? Or June first, not May, or June first?
It's a tough world.
Well, it is, but I, I think my recommendation would be to stay with what this is.
Now, I, I just have a.
You're gonna take a hundred thousand out of the fund balance, you can put fifty thousand back in.
Okay, I have a, I have a, can I just, just a question, or just a? Just a, uh, so, so now we're gonna have, we're talking about having, having an assistant in, in the sewer wastewater treatment plant. So, are we gonna shift wages as well?
I think you'll have to, I think you should.
You know what I mean, so you would.
I think you're gonna have to, I think you should.
I don't think you're gonna have a choice.
You know what I mean, so that would.
That would help us a bit.
So, that would probably cut another maybe ten or fifteen thousand.
Yeah, probably.
That'd be twenty percent, wouldn't it?
Yeah, cause right, right now it would be let's see, right now, it would be, right now it's fifty percent, so it would be, that would be twenty, so, take twenty percent of that.
Put it in the wastewater fund?
Yeah.
That's the healthier of the two.
And that makes sense.
And what's, what, Woody's eighty-five now?
No, cause right now, no, I think Woody's, is Woody eighty-five? I think so, Woody's, Woody's like eighty-five percent is, 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 comes out of. Yeah.
Another ten percent or so from water?
What's that?
Another ten percent of his is from water.
Yeah, and then I think he has five for streets, cause he doesn't do much in the streets, it's three his own.
It'll be done, but.
When was the last time we had a, we raised the taxes?
We haven't since we brought them down. It was well over, when Jeff was here, it was well over four dollars.
I know, but how many years ago?
They've been studied for probably five or six years.
I think since I've been on the board, they've been the same. About six shifts.
And even if you raise them, you raise them, I mean, seventeen cents just to raise ninety-six hundred dollars is really not, I mean, to be significant, you'd have to go quite a bit harder.
Well, I know the last two budgets, I've been saying I think we should start inching up a little bit because we're eventually gonna get to a point where you're either gonna have to dig so heavy into the fund balance that you're gonna hurt yourself, or you're gonna raise taxes so hard it's gonna really slap people across the head. And I, just because we've lived through it before. I, I think you need to, cause next year's gonna be worse. It's not gonna get better. You can't cut anything out of this for next year.
It's pretty lean.
It's very lean.
In fact, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that you increase one of those notes there by probably fifteen hundred dollars, so. And that is.
Trying to keep status quo for too long, I think it's gonna, it's gonna be, I've said it last year, I've said it before.
It's because we've had a significant fund balance that we could rely on. A sixteen forty.
Eighteen fourteen, uh-huh. Central Raj?
Yep, under electricity. Uh, we upped it, we increased it to three thousand because we're so close this year. I think it would be, I think it would be very smart for the board to increase this by fifteen hundred dollars.
To forty-five?
To forty-five hundred.
Because of the system.
Because when they put that vacuum pump out, out here.
I agree.
There will be significant increases.
We don't know what we're gonna have for an increase, so.
No.
He said he thought it would be an additional thousand a month.
I mean, this, it's.
How's, how's that possible?
Hopefully, it'll be in there by June first.
That seems low.
But this.
I know, but. More than the wastewater treatment.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Even if it increases, even if it increases seventy-five dollars a month or fifty dollars a month, you still got some, we're gonna be very close if, if what we have is a hundred and fifty-seven dollars left in that account, we're gonna be very close this year. So I just, that, that would be my recommendation is to increase that to forty-five hundred rather than three thousand. I mean, you can leave it and transfer money later on.
No, no, I think we should, we know it's gonna, we know it's gonna be hard.
Because if this is, if this is gonna be a very, you know, difficult year money-wise, you wanna make sure that you get your basis covered here as much as you can.
The tax cap is two percent?
Yes.
Did they do some formula thing where it's actually something else? No, okay.
It might be one point something, one point seven.
Well, I know they, they played with it, it's a formula.
No, it's a true two.
It's a true two.
It's a true two.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm not in favor of raising taxes, but it's the reality of running this village as a business as it needs to be run and everything.
There's not enough income. It's not that you have to have a huge fund down, so be wrong, but we have started putting money in reserves every year to try to keep our equipment up, is what we've done. And try to keep our buildings up. And at some point, you won't have those monies put in reserves to keep running from that, the fund balance. You just won't, you won't have it, so then you, so then we're gonna go back to where we were many years ago where you're borrowing money for equipment and paying interest. That's not wise either.
And then slapping people with a big increase in taxes.
And that's, if you recall, back when we first started here fifteen years ago, the tax rate was, was cut and cut, cut and cut and cut.
Mm-hmm, I was on that board.
And then, after the transition took place, when, when Jeff and the rest of us kinda come into this whole deal, immediately the prices, the taxes went from around three dollars up to about four fifty.
Yeah, cause you had to make up.
And we had to, I mean, this village was almost broke.
You had to replace, you had to replace what you were in the red and then double it because you had to get ahead.
There was one season where the water, the water was ten thousand dollars short, which means that next year you gotta increase it twenty thousand. To make up for the loss, so, you know, I, I think this village has done very well in terms of managing its money and, and making sure that we were able to provide everything that we felt was needed, equipment wise was a big thing. You know, I hate having to, I hate going out and borrowing money and have to pay interest.
Borrowing money, paying interest on equipment to replace it, and then the, the other double side of that sword is you're keeping equipment longer because you're, you don't wanna do that, so now you're making huge repairs cause you're out of warranty. And we decided a few years ago that we weren't gonna do that because it makes more sense to keep the equipment under warranty and updated. I don't think you're gonna do that in the near future if we keep doing what we're doing.
You know, with this, I think you have a I think you have a four or five or six-year cushion here with this amount.
I hate the idea of having to take a hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance.
That's a lot of money, it is?
It is, and I just, at, at, at what point are we going to say now we have to raise the taxes and it's gonna be a lot more than what we want to do instead of doing incremental, incremental increases?
Well, if we roll over fifty thousand, it actually will be fifty thousand, not a hundred thousand.
We shouldn't have to do it at all.
Borrow anything from the fund balance?
No, you can borrow some, that's not, that's not a problem, but.
Well, not, I mean, we've always done some of that, I think, I know last year we did and the year before we did.
You have to do some of it to raise your taxes prohibitively high. I mean, look at what, if seventeen cents will get us, if seventeen cents will get us ten thousand dollars, do the math for a hundred thousand.
Yeah, you don't, you.
But. Or fifty thousand, or twenty-five thousand.
I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't do it anyway, it's, it's going over the tax cap, right?
But if you inch it up and do a two percent and say, okay, we'll, we'll do that, and then you, it gets you some, it's better than nothing.
Can, can we know what the math would be, like if, if we did do the two percent, increase the two percent, what's that gonna reduce?
Yeah, if you even do that, it's gonna soften the blow later.
I mean, it's, I think you're gonna find that this is gonna be, two percent is gonna be the two percent, not inflation-wise, one point five this year and, you know, whatever, I think it's gonna be a straight across the board, two percent tax cap. If you wanna work at that rate, two percent. It's not significant, but it's something.
I just think at some point we have to start
I know, I argued that last year.
Doing something or we are going to hit a point where we either have to raise it significantly we're gonna be back where we were. And nobody's gonna be happy.
I disagree.
No, I, I don't think we'll be back.
We're a long ways from where we were.
Where we were, but it's in a similar situation, trying to catch up some.
I don't, I, I don't wanna be going backwards, everybody's worked so hard to get to where we are that you can't just keep it status quo.
Well, how about this, how about we think about it, we schedule a budget workshop in a week or so and and then we can have more time to hash this one over.
Let's come with some different scenarios, if we raise it this much, we raise this kind of money, let's look at it that way.
Yeah, and by taking a hundred thousand out, do we have a projected amount of what we're gonna have for balance afterwards? Is there some sort of best guess?
I can do my best.
Yeah, but then you're taking one.
I mean, we've got, we've got this right here on the back of the most recent statement.
Yeah, we know what it is right now.
We know what it is right now.
Yeah.
I mean,
I'll also look at your revenue sheet that Wendy just sent out to you.
Your best guess for a rollover is ten percent of your budget.
You like round numbers, don't you?
Yes, I do. I like those pennies and cents and it's much easier.
Okay, let's schedule a budget meeting. You wanna do this a week from today, two weeks from today?
I'm gone next week.
Okay. What is, uh, two Mondays?
Yeah. Yeah. The twenty-fifth.
Is that what it is? Two Mondays?
Yep.
Twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I'm gonna look at my counter, it moves a belt or something. No, it's just a blood drive, I'm fine. It's just been blood, blood drive, that's all. It don't ring a bell.
Does that, so does that work for you, Tom, though?
Yeah, maybe.
What time? Six? Six all right?
Six is fine with me.
Okay, March twenty-fifth, six o'clock.
It, no, February twenty-sixth.
February twenty-fifth.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
We wish in time away, they're rare.
Okay, I hope for the business come before the board motion and adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just put that somewhere, I don't know where it is.
Technology is so great, isn't it?
Yeah, I must've did something wrong, I don't know where it is. I'll, I'll just reschedule it.
Mary, can you get the camera?